We have the approval of the minutes of October 24, 2018, and November 14, 2018. I would recommend with the approval of the board that we defer that until later in the evening. We have a request for determination from Laurie Thompson, 11 Arnold Road. The applicant is proposing a second-story dormer addition on a single-family home. 6:30. Another request for determination. Paul Brochew, 32 Tantascwa Shore Drive. The applicant is proposing to construct an attached two-car garage with living space above, a carport with living space above, and extending the deck on the house. At 6:45, another request for determination from James Harbedian, 13 Old Hamilton Road. The applicant is proposing a renovation to change the garage area into a master bedroom, and a second floor will be added to the garage area. At 7:00 PM, a public hearing for a special permit, 179 Main Street. The applicant is requesting a special permit for the operation of an escape room. An escape room, also known as the escape game, is a physical adventure game in which players solve a series of puzzles and riddles using clues, hunts, and strategy. At 7:25, a public hearing and administrative appeal. Robert Kasim, 33 Main Street. The applicant is requesting relief from a cease and desist order from the Building Commissioner and Zoning Enforcement Officer. The cease and desist indicates that the only current business allowed on-site is the auto sales business, and that operation of all other businesses must cease and desist. Then we have reorganization of the board, old and new business, and we would do the minutes somewhere there, and the Germans. Would the board members please introduce themselves? We'll start with Tom Earls.
[inaudible]
Marge Cooney.
Diane Chapasso.
[inaudible]
Mike Young.
All right. Would...who's going to speak for the project? Please, you can sit over there and identify yourself, please. If you'd like, you may sit next to him, too. Please use the mic. That's for the audience that might be watching at home.
Eric Nash, Nash Contracting.
Eric Nash?
Yep.
All right. You can tell us basically what you want to be doing.
Property on 11 Arnold Road. She'd like to put a dormer on the backside of the building facing the cemetery in the backyard. It's a small dormer. Sit him in the back.
Okay. Um... Questions from any of the members of the board? Now, I see on the plan that there were two tracts, Track A and Track B, in the quit claim.
Oh, okay, yeah. The two plans, the two lots, yes.
Yeah, the two lots. Are they combined?
They are combined.
They are combined, okay. Just wanted to verify that. So, just for the public's knowledge, the zoning requirements in suburban residential is usually three-quarter acres, but if you have a half acre and on-town water and sewer, then you can go down to a half acre of public water and sewer, okay? Now, on...if you look on the application, it says that the rear setback is 185 feet. According... Let me get the deed description out. According to the deed description, it is one-quarter acre, but I couldn't see where you're saying the setback was 185 feet.
Where did you have that from?
Let me get the...
You wrote it on the application? Oh, yeah.
All right, let me look. I think this one that I questioned. Oh, here it is. It appears to me that it isn't 185 feet. You have a shed there as well.
Right, the shed.
All right. So, with the shed, where is...that shed is existing there.
That shed is existing.
All right, because it's right behind the house.
The shed is about 12 feet from the house, correct?
All right. So, you have 142 feet and 107 feet. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So, you're saying that it is 185?
The house is approximately about 45 feet from the intermediate property line.
Okay. All right.
Would you like to change that on the application, Marge?
Uh, yeah. I would want them to correct that on the application and initial it.
What would you like it to say?
Forty...45? I measured about 55, so...
It's about 145, because we got the shed there. I don't know what the dimension of the shed is as well.
Shed's six feet deep, so it's a really tiny shed. From the back property line, from the back end property line, we have 142 feet to the intermediate property line.
Okay.
From the intermediate property line to the house is about 45 feet.
That's what I thought.
The shed would be about 30 feet. So, between 170 feet to the shed, or 185 feet to the house from the back property line.
Oh, okay. All right. It was a little confusing there, because also with the description of the two tracts of land and the deed.
And I guess it was merged long before my time.
Well, that's what I was looking, because it never mentioned anything about being merged, you know? And recently, we had something where the assessor's record wasn't right as far as the acreage. Okay? All right. Anybody else?
I have no.
Uh, I don't know. I think that's my view. Yep. All right. You want me to turn it over to you?
No.
Now, ahead.
You can finish this.
Yep. Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add or anything? Is this going to be an all-year-round?
Yes.
It is an all-year-round and consistently being that way. Okay, just for the record. We have some memos. One is for the town planner. Have you received all of the memos we've received? One is for the town...from the town planner, Jean Bouvan. All right, you've received that. And basically, what she says, "I reviewed the plan submitted by Laurie Thompson for a request for determination, basically adding a second-floor dormer to add additional space, living area. It's non-conforming in frontage. It's not becoming any more non-conforming that way or in any other requirements." So, I personally don't see any problem with that. The Southbridge Fire Department, have you received that memo? Date of January 3rd?
No.
All right. "After reviewing the plans presented for the above property at 11 Arnold Road, the fire department has no major concerns on adding..." I'll give you this copy, because I won't need it then. "...on adding a second-story dormer into the single-family home. The owner of the property will have to install smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 148, Sections 26F and 26F and 1/2. The homeowner will also have to submit blueprints to the fire department and comply with the Town of Sturbridge General Bylaw Section 7.70, building numbering. What that is, is you have to have a number visible from the street on your house. Usually, that belief...
I have that already.
You have that about 2 1/2 by 3 inches. Okay. And that's it. Mr. Burlingham, have you got the memo from the Building Commissioner? Dated January 4, 2019. "I have reviewed the files and the proposed change for the subject property based on the information supplied to your office. This appears to be a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. I have no objections to this project." I'll give you these if you'd like, because I won't require them anymore. Thank you. All right. Any comments from the board? Any questions, comments, concerns?
Nothing from me.
Nothing?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to grant a determination?
I make a motion. I make a motion to grant the determination to Laurie Thompson for the property located at 11 Arnold Road to construct a second-floor dormer to add additional living space as shown on the plan submitted by Dennis Caldwell, ArchTechs, job number 18190-11, Arnold Road. The determination does not intensify the existing or create additional non-conforming, and the owner may apply for a building permit for the described activities as shown on the attached survey forthwith.
Thank you. I'll second that. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
I'll abstain, since I missed the beginning.
All right, 6:01. Okay. All right, I'll turn it over to our vice chair.
I'll set. Thank you. You outside while I'm doing that. I'll put acting. Okay? Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, it's 6:30, so we're going to do a request for determination for Paul Brochew. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
32 Tantascwa Shore Drive, application proposing an attached two-car garage with living space above, a carport with living space above, and extending the deck on the house. So...
I'm Mr. Jalbert from Jalbert Engineering, presenting the project for Mr. Brochew, which is located at 32 Tantascwa Shore Road. The lot itself is actually a non-conforming lot under several conditions. One, it does not have the applicable frontage nor the applicable area. We went before the Conservation Commission last night for an order of conditions on the property. It was passed in the affirmative that it would be able to...he would be able to construct what he proposed. We also went before the Department of Natural Heritage for the property, because the lake itself now has restrictions for plantation on the lake itself. We've got the affirmative from the Department of DEP and the Natural Heritage. So, we do have the three approvals for the lot itself.
Excuse me, is your speaker on, Wendy?
What?
Is your...is your mic on? It seems like your voice is very...
The green is on.
Oh, no, because your voice seems...
Okay. Did you hear me?
...for the audience, I mean.
Okay.
Thank you.
The proposal that Mr. Brochew is asking for, or did ask for with the conservation and everyone, was several things. One, he wanted to put a attached garage on the...or a carport on the southerly side of the house, which is immediately adjacent to his driveway. He also wanted to put in a two-stall garage, which is on the northerly side of the house. Both would access onto Tantascwa Shore Drive. The shed that he has in the front of his house, which is on the westerly side, would be located within the setbacks.
Okay.
And then the deck that he wants to put on, which is on the easterly side, is actually an extension of the existing deck. And then there's a stair accessway going into the lake itself, which is running in an easterly direction along the slope and accessing the lake on the most easterly side of the lot itself. The proposed additions, which is the carport with the...as living residents above the carport, a two-stall garage, the house, the shed, the deck, all conform to the present setback requirements in the town, so therefore, there is no means for any variances or anything, and everything does conform. The lot itself is accessed on a private way. It seems to be no problem there. The well and the septic system are working adequately and do not need to be repaired, and everything seems to be satisfactory. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted...so, we did not receive anything from the Board of Health, the Fire Department, the Building Inspector, and you...or Conservation, but you just brought the stuff from Conservation?
I didn't get anything.
The Conservation approved it last night, at last night's meeting.
Right. But do we...we don't have anything in writing from them, though?
No.
Okay. Just checking. Um... Hold on a second. And on one of the maps, it had...there's two lots. Is it two lots, or is it one lot now?
There's only a single lot.
Because on the map, this map, you have two lots, and if you add them together, the frontage is almost the same as the one you're...
The thing that you...see the map? I don't know. Let's see what...
You might have an updated one.
The map, actually, if there's two lots side by side, it doesn't really count because of merger. There is a single parcel right there now with approximately 115 foot of frontage on Tantascwa Shore Drive and a depth of roughly 180, 190 feet to the water. So, it's actually a single lot, period.
Okay. And we did receive a note from Jean Bouvan. Like I said, I'm surprised that we didn't get anything from the Board of Health, the Fire Department.
There was one...
We usually do.
From Fire. Let me give you this that I have. There were no major concerns noted.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll just summarize this for everybody, that the Fire Department has no major concerns on adding the existing...on adding to the existing home and the living space. Just you'll have to provide the Fire Department with blueprint drawings of smoke detector and carbon monoxide detector locations in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 148, 26F, and 26F and 1/2. And house numbers must be posted and visible from the street in accordance with Town of Sturbridge Bylaws, Section 7.70, building number...numbering. So...and I can give you this back after.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, I'll leave that right there.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. So, Tom, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. No. It's a...
Bill?
Not right now.
Marge?
Uh, no, I...now that we have a revised plan for the shed, that was one of my concerns.
We do?
What happened is, on the original plan that was submitted to you, the shed was located relatively adjacent to the property line on the grounds that under the building restrictions, a building of this size was exempt. However, we did not take into consideration the zoning restrictions, and because of the zoning requirement, the shed was relocated to be inside the...
Yes. It was updated.
Yes.
Revised yesterday.
You should have the revised...
Yeah, I have it. That's what I said. It was revised yesterday.
Right.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions or comments?
No, I don't. I'm good.
I am?
Yeah, that was my main concern there.
You're good.
One question. So, is the footprint of the entire structure changing? Is it increasing?
Is the footprint of the building increasing?
Yes.
There...right. The carport is also...is it an increase on the original footprint? And the two-stall garage is also an increase. And the deck in the front is an increase. However, all the increases are within the parameters of the setback, so there's nothing that is encroaching that would require any type of special permit or variance because of the fact that the additions onto the existing structure are conforming out at the present time.
Yeah, I ask only because I don't know, maybe I'm headless. But you have proposed the minimum lot coverage is the same?
No.
No, it shouldn't be changing. The actual...the actual coverage on the lot originally was at 4.7%, okay, which was just the original structure.
Right, no, it's on 10.6.
And then with the new additions onto the house, it comes to 10.6. The 10.6 actually is below the requirement of zoning, which is 15%.
Right. I was looking at something else.
Yeah.
Is this just living space, or is this a bedroom, bathroom, anything being added? Or just...
What it is, is it's basically a living space again, which is just...it was a cramped style building. Actually, the building actually didn't even conform to present zoning. It's just making it livable now, okay? It's a year-round residence, but he wants to make it bigger.
Is this just living space and bedrooms, bathrooms being added?
The only thing...the only thing is, is be one...is there one additional bedroom?
No. No, so one of the bedrooms is actually being turned into a kitchen, and then there's a bedroom that's going off to the side. And then in the back above the garage, I have a...there's a study, a bedroom, a washroom, and a bathroom above the garage.
So, what's...what do you have currently in the house right now?
Two bedrooms. So, it's going two bedrooms, staying two bedrooms, correct?
Staying two bedrooms with one bath?
Correct. It'll go from one bath to two baths. About 800 square feet now.
Mike, do you have any...
No, I'm fine with the project.
This here is actually above the two-stall garage area here. This is above the carport. This is part of the original house.
Right, so there's a second bath being added. There's a master bath.
Right. So, it's not...the impact of the service site is not increased.
Does anybody else have any more questions? No?
No.
Seeing none? If anyone would like to make a...
Somebody make a motion?
Yeah. Make a motion.
Okay. All right.
I make a motion to grant the determination to Paul Brochew for the property located at 32 Tantascwa Shore Drive to construct an attached 24-by-24 attached garage with living space above, as well as an attached carport with living space above, and a rear deck expansion and related site improvements, as shown on the plan submitted by Jalbert Engineering titled "Proposed Site Plan Prepared For Paul Brochew." Plan date 10/9/18. DWG number 18159. Revised dated...revision number two dated 1/5/2019. The determination does not create...
115.
One...oh, 115. Sorry. 115, 2019. The determination does not intensify the existing or create additional non-conformings, and the owner may apply for a building permit for the described activities as shown on the attached survey forthwith.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Special.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Lots of luck.
And when do you got to do what you got to wait for, period, period, and stuff to get out of the house?
How are you doing, Mr. Jalbert? Well, busy is good. Cha-ching, cha-ching.
I put today's date?
Yeah.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Got my stuff away.
Always, Mr. Jalbert. Yeah, we're right on time.
Okay, the next one is... Request for determination for James Harbedian, 13 Old Hamilton Road. Applicant is proposing a renovation to change the garage area into a master bedroom, and a second floor will be added to the garage. and a second floor will be added to the garage. So... Mr. Jalbert, if you want to...
Okay, Leonard Jalbert, representing the property for Mr. Harabedian at 13 Old Hamilton Road. It's for a expansion, expansion of the house as far as volume is concerned, in that what they want to do is to go on to a second-story floor on the building itself, plus a second story on the garage area within the property. We went before the Conservation Commission last night. The property was approved by the Conservation Commission to allow for construction of the property itself. What's happening here is what I consider a unusual glitch to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals where this property has the proper frontage, it conforms to zoning, it has the proper area, which also conforms to zoning, and it has a, actually, a coverage that is only 5 percent, 4.36, which is basically one-third of the requirement. So, you know, you can't help but say to yourself after you look at this, why am I here? The reason I'm here is that the expansion on the property itself is, is on the second floor, which creates a increase in volume of the property in question. And the, the building itself is, is non-conforming because of the fact that the house is, is within the setback area of the property line located immediately adjacent to the lake itself. The setback requirement basically is on the southerly side of the house, is it, it goes right through the garage area and a very small portion of the house. This is the only area that is encroaching relative to setback. This is the reason we're here. However, you know, you wonder why if we're gonna just improve the garage area in the upper floor, why did we have to go before conservation? Well, it was two things. One was a structural problem in the front of the house, which is located on the south westerly side of the house, which we had to go in there with four sonotubes to support the house itself and, and the porch area. And then also, there's a deck that we're putting on the, the property, which is basically 13 by 26 feet, which we're removing the deck itself and going into a pervious paver detail, which you can see on the drawings. What that is basically, it's just, it's a patio, which is ungrade, which is filled with stone and used basically for catching of any runoff that goes in the area. This pervious paved deck area will be used for containment of the runoff on the house, which will diminish the present runoff on the property. And that's the reason why we had to go before conservation, which we got the approval for it. Outside of that, it's a public sewer, which is on the property itself. It's a private well. Neither is going to be changed or modified. The accessibility off of Hamilton Road into the property, the driveway, nothing will be changed. There will be no grade changes on the property, other than the fact that the patio that's gonna be built will be ungrade. But that preservation of, of truck, loaded into trucks, removed from the sites, there will be no change in grade on the property per se. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Those sonotubes that are gonna be put in, are they to replace existing ones?
If you call them, yes. They're, they're existing piers.
Piers, but they're, they're not, they weren't the sonotube type?
Right, they're not sonotube.
All right.
They don't have proper frost protection or anything.
Yeah, that's why, yeah.
What they're being, is they're being removed and replaced with proper grade.
Oh, okay. And all the materials will be taken off in a quick and effective manner?
That's correct.
So as not to...
There'll be nothing on the site. There'll be no grade changes.
I'll be, before we start, I just wanted to add that we did receive a memo from the town planner and from the building commissioner. Again, we received nothing from the fire, the board of health, or conservation. Um, yeah, and I, maybe if I, I wanna ask this question before we get started to clear things up. On the plan, there's a garage that does not appear to be attached to the house.
That is correct.
Is that what's getting?
No.
'Cause there's nothing labeled on your plan that says garage or...
What, what it...
So I was wondering where exactly this is on the plan. I have your, all of them. I have that. But where on this plan?
This is the garage.
That's the garage.
Right. And this is the...
This is what you're talking about.
That's the garage.
Okay.
This here is not gonna be touched.
Okay. 'Cause it was confusing to see this garage, and there was nothing labeled.
Right, but if you, if you read the letter from the town planner, it's pretty explicit that it is the one in the building, not the...
Right, but then it mentions another, the way it was worded, it was also confusing, so... But that's cleared up, so that's fine.
Okay. And then what's actually taking place is that if you, if you look at it, the zone line coming through is actually coming right through this point right here. This is, this is the second floor that's going above the garage.
Yeah.
This is what's going upstairs on the second floor. Okay?
Yeah.
This is what the house actually looks like, which we're taking, putting this warmer back on for the garage itself to get that.
Okay.
Okay? And this is what it would look like after this done.
Okay. Thank you very much.
This was kind of stereotyped. Anyone have a question?
What side of this house is the front? Are you calling the front of the house?
Please?
I'm calling the front.
I'm calling the front over here on the water.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, this is the garage area.
Yeah. And this is where the sonotubes are going in here?
The sonotubes are going one, here, there, there, there. There, there's actually four of them. One, two, three, four sonotubes. And then this is, this is the...
Patio.
Patio. Okay, this here will not be touched.
How much change in grade is there underneath that pervious surface? Is that a significant...
Probably two, two and a half feet of stone coming through here roughly.
Oh, and that's gotta, you're gonna add the stone. Take the dirt out and add...
That goes underneath.
Okay.
This pavers definitely go up on the top here, and then the stone that goes down below.
Okay, and basically, grade is staying the same. The pavers are, that grade, okay.
The rest stays the same, nothing changes.
Okay.
Mike, do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions on the project. It works fine.
For Dallas?
Nope.
Diane?
Nope.
I'm all set. Marge?
Mr. Jalbert, on the plan, we, you know, it didn't show the proposed. It just said existing on the chart, you know, where we have the required...
The irony is the proposed and existing is the same.
That, I mean, no, I know, but if we, only if it was written that way, you know, anybody looking...
But I started out, and I told you, it's unusual where it is.
Oh, okay.
Nothing is, relative to the footprint, nothing is changing.
Yeah, no, I, I saw that, so...
Okay, so...
Yeah, 'cause I know it was mainly dealing with drip edges and the...
Right.
Rest of the stuff.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. I just wanted to get that in there.
Any more questions or comments?
Oh, excuse me.
Anyone like to make a motion?
Anybody? Any grabbing?
Go for it.
All right, I'll, I'll go for it, okay. I'll make a motion to grant a determination to James Harabedian for property located at 13 Old Hamilton Road, Sturbridge, Mass., as requested to renovate and change the existing garage into a master bedroom.
On second level.
With the addition of a second level, second floor, all work will be done in the existing garage area. Okay?
No.
Well, attached, attached garage?
Attached garage.
Within the attached garage.
Attached garage area.
And then on, on the second floor, the, the second floor is also gonna be putting an addition on that, too.
Well, yeah, the addition of a second floor.
Okay, yeah, right. That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And I think that's it. With the...
That's it.
That's it, okay. As shown on plan, job number 18182, dated 11/27/18. No revision shown. Prepared by Jalbert Engineering, 54 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass., 01566. Architectural plans by Stephen Fleishman Architects LLC, job number 17-053. And it's very hard to see the date. Yeah, I, I don't know if you have, but it's...
I'll make sure it gets...
On the architectural plan, so I'm just having a difficulty seeing the date on that.
Yeah, I do, too. I just, I just lose the numbers.
Yeah, that's right. I just use the number 17.053, so, and the drawing numbers that I submitted, eight, eight one, eight, eight two, and...
Eight two.
Eight three, I believe. Yeah. Eight four as well, okay? I can't see a date on it. And no revision shown. But in the other, it doesn't say it has revisions on some of it, but there's different dates on it. It's so hard to see.
Yeah, what it is, is the dates actually are the different steps on the revision relative to the house itself.
Like on these different pages as you proceeded to the different process?
Right.
All right, so as long as we have that, maybe you could make it up and get it from the contractor or something.
I'd say what you gotta, if you want it for clarity, you could say that it's under plan number 17-059.
I said that, yeah, I said 053.
Which is under Mr. Fleishman.
Yeah, that's right. I did say that.
That would be clear enough, I think.
Yeah, I did have that, that, that material there, okay?
Yep.
All right.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? opposed? Nobody? It's unanimous.
Unanimous.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. They are in trouble.
Everyone get ready for a storm review.
I know.
Don't tell me that. Please, I don't wanna hear that.
Be a little light snow Friday morning, and Sunday was supposed to get heavier snow.
Sunday, snow and ice, they're saying.
I hope they're wrong.
I'd rather have a little snow than the ice.
Move it to California. Don't want it here. Don't need it here. All right.
Someone has to read that public hearing now.
I have a copy of the...
You look like Nanook from the north. Funny. Nanook from the north.
You need it.
I know.
She's the clerk, right? Are you the clerk?
No, I'm not the clerk.
Well, you can be.
No, I, I'm a member. I'm a member. Okay. Towne of Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals, public hearing notice, special permit with David Jacque, Jacque?
Jacob.
Jacob, okay. Uh, I, I was trying to do it the French way. I don't know. In accordance, in accordance with provisions of Master General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Center Office Building located at 301 Main Street on Wednesday, January 16, 2019, at 7:00 PM on the application of David Jacque, Jacob, of East Brookville, Mass. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Chapter 20, Section 24.09, and Section 7, Sec., Chapter 7, Section 7.02, subsection A of the zoning bylaw for the operation of the escape room. And the escape room, also known as an escape game, is a physical adventure game in which players solve a series of problems and riddles using clues, hunts, and strategy. The property is located at 179 Main Street. A copy of the application may be inspected at the office of the town clerk during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on petition should appear at the time and place designated. Elizabeth Banks, Clerk, Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay.
Thank you.
We, we did receive notices from the building inspector. Based on the information supplied, he does, he has no objection to this project. Also, from the health agent, um, this establishment is proposing to sell retail prepackaged food only, an application fee must be received and permit issued the applicant is aware. I do not foresee any problems obtaining compliance with this and have no additional concerns. Also, from conservation, they have no concerns. Work appears to be all interior, so it's not reviewable activity for them. And we also received one from Mrs. Bouvonne, which is lengthy, so I'm not going to read it, but, um, we'll refer to it later on in the meeting. The DPW, we received no response from DPW, the police, or the fire.
We did, we did get police.
Police said no.
We did?
Yeah. He just sent back the memo. No, always.
No concerns.
No concerns.
Well, that's good. I did not receive that. So you can get started and tell us about your proposal.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to introduce my wife, Megan, who will be the day-to-day operations manager of the business. And...
Peter.
Peter.
Engineer.
He represents the, the building itself.
Okay.
Mr. Dan Matt asked him to come for any questions.
Oh, okay, so you represent Mr. Matt?
Correct. For any questions about parking and whatnot. The bills, the building itself is existing. We're just moving into an existing office space. We're not touching any, anything structural inside of the building. There's a, currently, there's a 37 by 37-foot open space inside that we're gonna build some interior walls. I think the biggest concern at this point is fire safety, and it has to do with, you know, constructing interior walls and whatnot. We are talking with a gentleman out of Charlton that will be helping us with the fire safety stuff, an engineer firm, at the request of Mr. Dan Matt. stuff, an engineer firm, at the request of Mr. Dan Matt, he's the person that installed the fire safety system in the first place, inside the building.
Basically, excuse me, this is Mr. Matt's project, isn't it?
No.
Basically, he's the petitioner, isn't he? Because it had his...
His name is on the application.
That's what I'm saying, he's the owner of that...
He's owner of the building, yes.
Of the building, that's what I'm, okay.
I'll be the owner of the business.
All right, so you're the petitioner for the business itself?
Yes.
Okay, that, it was a little confusing on the way it was presented in the application.
All right, I'm sorry for that.
No, that's okay, I just wanted clarification, that's all.
This is our first business, so we're, we're new at this.
That's understandable.
The, the business itself, Escape Games, I'm not sure if you're familiar with them, but generally it's a series of, of smaller rooms, and they have puzzles inside of them. You attempt to solve the puzzles to escaped what, in theory, is a locked room, even though most spaces aren't technically locked, you're not really locked inside of them. Our space, I, I'm leaning towards a magnetic lock system with an emergency exit button that's next to the door, so if in an emergency you can get out. This, the, the business itself, really is, we're not set on, on even the interior spaces. We have a floor plan, we've, we've given it to you, but it, it could change depending on what the fire safety engineer says, you know, if he's, if, if we have to move a wall two feet because it will not impact the sprinkler system, we're, we're okay with doing that. So we're just in the process right now of, of having them go through the space and determining what...
So this is not a final drawing, this is just a conceptual of what you have right now.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. I'm hoping, I'm hoping within two weeks it will be finalized. We're, we're shooting for a target opening date of March first.
I'll start on this end, Tom, any questions?
Could you just give me a little more description of what's going to happen? I'm looking at your floor plan, and the, the thought that you might have eight people in each one of those spaces, ten people, just a little more, an idea of what the game involves in term of motion by the people, and just what they're going to be doing in there, that kind of feel with any of this.
So, ten is not also, it's not a fixed number, you know, once we, once we have the engineer come and we determine where the walls are going to be, the number of players will be determined based off of how many people we think we safely can have inside of each space. So ten is what we're shooting for, I think it's an overestimate, we'll probably be lower than that. In terms of what the players will be doing, so, so you come into the space, into reception area, most people book from, you know, an online source through a website, you come to the space, you're greeted by a receptionist, and you watch a, a video. Both has safety, so there's, you know, like a waiver type information where you are shown where the fire exits are and what not to touch, you know, like electrical outlets, that kind of thing. And then there's a description of what the game is. So right now, we're, we're looking at having four different games inside the space. One has to do with something that's post-apocalyptic, another's a classroom, one is more of like a Middle Evil-type Merlin quest, and another is like a bank robbery. So, each space is different, and each space, the size of each space will determine how many players can be inside of it, but primarily the, the puzzles are deciphering codes, or, you know, finding something physical, like a key that unlocks something. This, you know, the, the games, they're meant to be difficult, and the puzzles are roughly between ten and fifteen per game, depending on how, you know, how we feel after we test them, before we open to the public, how we feel the, the general population, you know, can, can get through them. But the goal is to, to make it achievable, make, make the games winnable.
How long would you expect the group to be in?
So sixty minutes.
Sixty minutes, okay.
Games are based off of one hour.
I don't have any further questions.
Yes, so, in this plan, the, the only parts that you're adding have the areas highlighted in red?
That's correct, yep.
The other are existing.
Everything is already existing, yes.
And then, I'm guessing by the plan, these rooms were about ten feet wide?
They are roughly ten feet wide, yes.
And ten feet by what, about thirty feet, maybe? Well, some less, it looks like.
Uh, some less, one of them is, is larger than the others.
Furniture and stuff in these rooms?
Uh, yes, it depends on the, the game makeup, but yes. The post-apocalyptic, which is the largest room, has some furniture type, has some lockers, foot lockers, has a futon bunk bed type arrangement.
So you'll have five rooms in total?
Uh, we're shooting for five, yes.
It looks like, it looks like all these rooms, except for the two that are existing, have two points of egress.
So, so the, the three rooms that are on the, the edge of the building, those have a single-point entry and exit, but they, they more than likely will be changed to have a, a secondary exit. As part of the game, these, these rooms typically have, you know, a one-way in and a different way out, so you go into another room from the, the beginning room.
Well, just that the room's ten feet wide by thirty feet, and if you have ten people in there, people are panicking, that's...
Right. Like I said, I, I think that, that will be based off of what we determine once the walls are built, I, I think ten is an, is an optimistic number.
I think it's also determined by the building code.
Right.
And we're watching the whole time on a video, so if anybody's ever worried or concerned, they always have the way out and can go and talk to them and get them through their escape. If they feel like they're panicking at any point, we, we're going to be monitoring them the whole time.
Yeah, that was one of my things, if you're claustrophobic...
So there's a game master?
And you find out you're in this room, and now you find out you never suffered from claustrophobia before.
Right, right.
And I'm also thinking of what happened in Poland recently with those people that were killed trapped in a room.
Yes, so that, that's one of our largest concerns as well. My, my wife and I are both former police officers, I work in the security industry in my full-time job for over twenty years. I've planned and executed trips with my clients to large-scale sporting events like the Olympics in South Korea and otherwise. I'm very accustomed to evaluating spaces. I fully intend to, to do a risk and physical security assessment on the property, which, you know, will be available to, to anybody that would like to see it. I drafted a, a single-page document, if you'd like to see it, that just outlines what we currently have for fire safety in the building, which I think is above what code requires for, for currently.
In the, the whole building there?
Yeah, just, generally in the space that we're in. The whole building, the whole of the building is the same, but specifically the space that we're in is what's outlined here. And just a few other things about, like the game master, who observes every game, will have high-definition cameras, and if there's any issues, not only the, the players can choose to exit anytime because they have panic buttons, they could, they could leave whenever they'd like, but also...
They're also able to talk with us, too.
Right.
To ask for clues.
They're able to communicate with you the whole time.
We can communicate with them, yeah, it's part, it's part of the game. Uh, part of the game, if you get in trouble, or if you have, are having problems solving a puzzle, you could, you could contact the game master who gives you clues.
I have another question.
Sure.
And this talks about insurance and that on it, in case the extreme thing happens, what nobody would like to see happen, is there any way at all that the town would be held culpable?
I don't, I don't see it as such, but I am not a, a lawyer, so I couldn't speak on it. I can only tell you that there is really only one insurance company that insures escape rooms in, in the entire United States, and the company that I've gone with has over eight hundred spaces, and in five years, he's had one claim. This is just, it's not something that, where people get injured doing, it's, it's meant to be fun, it's meant to be kind of slow speed, it's not...
Yeah, but if you've got somebody that gets claustrophobic or something, they can go a little wild, you know?
Yep, of course. And you can always ask for help, uh, this is not something that you do individually, this is something that you do in groups. So, you know, if, if I'm with my wife and we're doing, uh, one of these rooms, and I, I recognize that she's having a problem, then, of course, I, I probably would be able to tell that, and we both could leave. So it's, it's something you do with your friends, and it's, it's, it's meant to be fun in nature. And in regards to Poland, it's a tragedy, fifteen girls died...
Oh, yeah.
From smoke inhalation, not from the fire.
No, from the smoke, yeah.
So, it's, it's a real concern for us, but at the same time, there's no regulation there, this is a pop-up location, it was in a, a former residence. It's not, um, you know, there was no, no regulation, no oversight, no approving committee, no fire safety really in place, and they were physically locked in a, in a small room.
No, I, I agree with you.
Yeah, so, so the spaces that we've laid out, you can tell that, that there's, you know, there's an emergency egress hallway that leads to, from the, from the main entrance all the way to the back where the emergency exit is. You're, you're pretty much one room away from gaining access to that hallway at, at any moment during the game, you know, with, with the installation of panic buttons. I, I think it's, I think it's safe to say that we're in the top one percent in terms of fire safety, especially with the sprinkler system being there.
I have, well, two other questions, and I'm finished.
All right, well, I'm gonna...
Oh.
Do you have more questions, Phil?
I was just asking, I haven't been behind this building, and I was just curious, this is the existing parking lot here.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right.
Correct.
No, I'm all set, that was it.
No, what was my question?
If, if you don't mind, I'd like to give each of you a copy of this?
Yeah, I'd like, but I have the two questions, the one just went out of my head now. You're talking about having a place there, a retail place where you can sell some simple things, packaged, packaged foods and, and puzzles?
So, you know, cokes, waters, potato chips, that kind of stuff.
And my other question is, at no time will any of...
I have a copy.
The activity or the game or anything be conducted outside, they will never leave, they will not go outside to seek any clues or anything like that?
No, no, that is correct. Nobody will be exiting the, the pre-established area where the games are to be played. No, no clues in the hallway, no clues, um, in exterior of the building, everything is inside the rooms.
That's a little concerned of, too.
There's no, like, flashes, fires, none of that stuff in there, it's not...
Nope, there's nothing that we have planned. No strobe lights, no, no simulated fire, nothing, nothing like that.
Wait, with the following safety measures and previously passed inspection, smoke detectors, strobe lights?
Yes, ma'am.
Why, the name, Escape the Pike?
Uh, the Mask Pike?
That's what I was wondering, if it was, had to do with the Mask Pike, is that a theme of a lot of your puzzles?
No, not at all.
It should be.
Just something that we liked. Uh, we're close to the Mask Pike here.
I mean, yeah, that just got me, you know, the Pike.
Also, the, the logo that we have has the, the leprechaun's hat in it as well.
Okay.
The symbol of the Mask Pike.
I have a question. Besides fire, besides fire, is there any other town group besides ourselves who is in charge of inspecting or monitoring, or any of that?
So the building inspector, he, you know, the interior spaces that we're building, he, he has to come and approve, that's why we have the engineers drafting a plan for us.
Okay, I'm just thinking who else would be there, and the, the fire department will be in.
Board of Health, Bill.
The Board of Health.
Board of Health, yeah, for the food, okay.
Diane, do you have any questions?
Well, um, I, I think just one, will your plan and your interior plan of all the different rooms, like, will police and fire have those plans, so...
Absolutely.
...a bit of anything, they...
Yeah, absolutely.
Know exactly where?
Once the floor plan is established, I, I intend on having a, kind of a placard built, like you do at hotels, that, that depict the exit, you know, from wherever you're at, so maybe each room of the, each of the rooms will have one.
Okay. Fidelis?
Yeah, I think it's nice that you're having something like this, and, you know, you can store bridge us a location. I've heard about these games, I don't know much about it, I know I've seen on GroupOn, you know, I've seen coupons for escape games, and I never knew what it was, you know, I always thought someone had to be tied up, and then they have to escape.
Sometimes, sometimes, some, we just did one last week that was like that, where they handcuffed you.
Yeah, because, because, yeah, you know, because some of the, some of the images I've seen were images of people who, you know, maybe they had, what do you call it, um, escaping from, what's it called, handcuffs, you know? So, but what's the minimum number of players?
Two.
Two.
Two players.
Two players, and who sets the guidelines for the games? Are there, are there any, you know, is there any, any supervise, any supervising body, or, or is it just you that comes up with what the game parameters are going to be, and then you communicate this with the players?
Right.
Either through a website, or through some kind of menu of, of, of games you have available?
We're not franchised, um, you know, franchises cost money. My brother has, has designed games for three other spaces, and he's the lead game designer, so he's taking what he's learned by designing games for three other, not, not three other games, but three other spaces, three other, three other, uh, escape games. So, uh, no, there's no governing body outside of, you know, the towns, so...
Like Peter said, you know, the maximum occupancy will be determined once, you know, safety inspections are done, and that will determine how many players we can kind of have in the space at one time.
Okay, and you said the length of each game is, is an hour?
One hour, yeah.
So what happens at, you know, at one hour mark if they haven't solved the puzzle?
They, they are, they fail miserably, and they're escorted away from the...
Usually the game, I'll tell you the nice answer, usually the game master walks them through the rest of the puzzle, so that they understand the part that they got stuck on, or where they got caught up, and then how to actually finish the puzzle, because you're technically not going to come back, you shouldn't waste your money and come back and play the same game that you just didn't make, but, so we kind of walked you through the rest of the puzzle to explain the parts that you would have gone to, and then you would have solved this, and then this tech would have happened, and then, so, you, you get to still see the game out for the next couple minutes, and then, then you get to go have a bag of chips and go up to the cheese.
How many...
That's why she's the operations manager, I'm not.
And you, you can also win before the sixty minutes is up.
Yeah.
And then we're going to have a leaderboard, and that will be competitive, you know, if you got it out in twenty-one minutes, then you'll be on our leaderboard, and then until somebody knocks you out of that, and then we might have some prizes, and we can come back to a game for free if you're the top leaderboard, or when we start a new game or something like that.
And when you say puzzle, right, it could be, but it's not, you, you don't necessarily mean by puzzle an actual puzzle, but just something that you have to, some...
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, just a puzzle.
It could be, it could be a codex, it could be a cipher, it could be something literally as simple as finding a key. Lots of places we go, you, you look under the floor mat, and there's a key there.
It's like the Geocache thing.
Right, and it opens the front door, but then once you get inside, you have to determine, like, okay, where do I start, we're in a room, and there's, you know...
Everything is kind of in this room that is searchable, you search around, you look for clues, with those clues, it kind of leads you down a path, and some puzzles are linear, which means, you know, you kind of work it, work them in a straight line, and sometimes puzzles are nonlinear, which means there's multiple puzzles that can be solved at the same time. So for, for instance, if you're a group of two, it, or a smaller group, it's, it's better to do linear-type puzzles, but if you're in a large group, it's better to have puzzles that you can complete at the same time, so people kind of aren't standing around watching each other, more than one person can be active at the same time. So it depends on, again, how many people we can have in the space, will determine that.
It's really a team-building exercise as well, and it really works on communication. We like to go together, because we know that as a team, we're pretty strong, and we see things differently, so it's, it's really a... things differently, so it's, it's really a fun team building exercise. So, we're hoping that corporate events could be held and catered by possibly Teddy G's or Whoopi Doo's to help out with the dessert kind of options, because we're, we're hoping to bring in the local businesses within the building structure.
We have, um, sorry, we, we have a mentor, the, the person that built one of the first games in Massachusetts is in, uh, and from Worcester, his name's Jason. Uh, it's one of my time, one of my brother's good friends and, uh, he's now since sold that business and he's helping us kind of, uh, along the way.
And you said corporate events were one of the...
It's 25% of his business.
How many do you have now in Massachusetts?
We, this is the first one.
This is the first one for us. There are local, um, the closest other escape rooms, there's one in Worcester that might be relocated.
Well, that, that's what I'm saying. I know of one in Worcester, but...
There's two in Worcester, there's one in Webster.
That's within our immediate area, but then further out towards Boston and out.
There's not one within 30 mile, uh, 30 minutes of here.
No, I meant, do you know how many all total in Massachusetts?
There's over a dozen. There's over 2,000 in the United States.
Over the United States, yeah, but I didn't realize.
We were just, a couple of days ago, we were just in Florida and we, uh, yesterday we were...
It was, we were in Jacks, we were in Jacksonville and there was more than six just in Jacksonville. Uh, they're, they're becoming quite popular.
It is.
So, yeah, I'm just, I'm just gonna, I'm looking at the layout. Now, the reception, that's where players hang out before, before playing, right? Or if you're not playing the game, you're in the reception.
Correct. That's also where they'll see the, the safety videos and whatnot, before they go into the games.
Okay, so do you have, um, you know, another space? Well, you have the conference room, so that would be, um, you know, like if corporate wanted to use this, you know, use, do something there?
Yes.
They could have a meeting in the conference room?
Yes.
Right, and then, you know, how large is that? I see it's 11 by, I don't quite see the other side.
11 by 16, I believe.
11 by 16?
It's big enough for a, a conference table, it's, uh, can seat eight.
Yeah. Okay.
So, and honestly, I, I don't, I think we'll probably, uh, the largest number of people will go into one game is probably gonna be eight. Uh, it's too early to tell you. We're, we're shooting for 10 because obviously that's more profitability for us, but may not be realistic.
Yeah. So, this is still conceptual?
Still conceptual based off of, uh, it, it, we'll really finalize our plan once fire safety is in there and can, can see the actual, uh, sprinkler locations and whatnot. Then we'll kind of determine our layout.
Mike, do you have any questions?
No, I was just curious, um, in, in terms of your, your marketing and advertising plan, are there particular groups that you target? Is this thought of as, as a family game, you know?
Yep.
Bring everybody in on the weekend type thing or, um, you had mentioned corporate, I, I picked up on that, you know, the idea of team building if you have, let's say, a sales team or a marketing team from a local company, uh, trying to get them to work together better or something like that. Uh, but how are you, how are you gonna publicize this? Who's gonna see it and where are they gonna see it?
So, 10 and it, so 10 and older is, uh, is what we're, we're gonna say. Um, it really depends on the game, uh, you know, if parents think that, uh, their children could take part in it. Um, there, there's a lot of kids that, that do these, you know, for birthday parties and whatnot. Uh, in terms of marketing, you know, we'll be heavy in Google, uh, just, just probably for the first year to make sure that we're, uh, one of the first, when you type in escape room, uh, in, you're in a specific area, it'll come up like that. But social media, for the most part. Uh, my wife has a lot of friends here and once you, uh, you know, a lot of these games, what they do is they take a picture at the end, they post it to the, the, uh, Facebook or Instagram's, uh, account for the business and then you tag the people that were in it. So, when that happens, you know, you get, all of their friends are able to see that. So, you, you get that kind of marketing, which is, um, much different than the traditional type.
But we're also hoping to network in with hotels and...
We've spoken to Teddy G's and other businesses in the, in the building, yeah. We, we plan on probably putting, uh, an advertisement at the local hotels, you know...
Somebody leaked it on Facebook the other day, it seemed like the, a lot of wide range of ages were very interested in it. It's really what your interest is and my parents have gone, my kids have gone, we've gone, so, and our friends, so multi-generational. We've also been in with, um, families. Sometimes you get tagged in if you want to go to the same game at the same time. So, if we were to go and then four other people wanted to come in, so we've had strangers that we get to know and try to communicate with and solve the puzzle as well, and they've been all ages as well, so...
And some people like that part of it, the, the booking two spaces out of eight and then you show up and there's, there's people that you don't know. Some people like that kind of, um, that mentality experience with dealing with people you don't know.
Our brother, my brother-in-law loves that. He loves going in with other people he doesn't want to.
That's not us, we like going alone by ourselves.
What is the, uh, the, uh, youngest age group, uh, that you...
10, nobody, nobody younger than 10.
Nobody under 10 would, would consider, okay.
We have a, we have a daughter that's, that's turning eight this year and I think, I think 10 is probably appropriate.
All right. Okay, no, I was just curious about...
Some of the puzzles are kind of sophisticated, you know? And if, if you wanted to do it younger than that, you probably could just be there to watch your family, but, uh, we find anything younger than 10 was, will probably just be a distraction.
Yeah.
Just take away from your gaming experience.
We have been on vacation and our, we have three children and our kids have been there. One was a movie theater scene where they got to sit and watch a movie and be popcorn while we're trying to keep our...
Well, that, yeah, that they enjoy.
And popcorn was up there at our...
Right.
So, it was harder to do.
So, where, where about the gaming experience, you know, having...
So, there's a wide range of ages.
Absolutely.
Yeah, sounds interesting.
I'm sorry, did I answer your question about advertising? Did that answer your question about...
Yeah, I, I kind of figured you were gonna go on the internet, but I, I just, uh, I was curious about that and, um, you know, I think it sounds great.
Yeah, most, most people book these a- ahead of time. It's not something you kind of just show up and do. Most people will go to the website, will look for a time and will book it ahead of time and then show up.
Maybe we should go as a crew, huh?
Not like the movies where you could.
That would really drive them nuts, wouldn't it? That would really drive them bananas.
But, you know, the, everyone's wel- welcome to come and, uh, check out the space once it's, once it's finished. You know, the, our initial plan is not to build out every room. Uh, it, I think it would just take too long, well, you know, we're, we're doing this alone. I'm funding it myself, so, uh, I'm building most of the puzzles myself. Um, so, we're planning on opening two rooms, uh, hoping for March 1st and then continuing on and building until everything is, is complete. But the space itself, you know, the, the general box, when the red area, the external box kind of that's there, uh, and then the lines that mark the separate games. Those will probably stay the same, but the other interior walls and stuff could come down to change the games, uh, change the kind of the layout, so it's not always the same. Um, but that's, that's something that will be determined by, you know, how, how the public, how much, how many people are coming to, to the games, you know? If after 18 months we find that it's kind of got, interest has kind of died down in one particular game, we might change it over to something else.
Now, how do you expect to access those rooms? From the back lot?
No, 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 so there's a...
From the interior, from the front of the building?
You mean, how are they getting inside?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the side entrance, um, there's a, there's a elevated parking lot that's, that's kind of by itself from the, from the back of the building.
Yeah, yeah, no, I saw that with the staircase there and the landing and that.
There's a ramp as well.
Yeah.
The ramp entrance is the main entrance to the building.
That's what I was wondering about.
So, you do go through the hallway, just to get to our front door. But there's also bathrooms.
The deck that's off the back is, that's purely, uh, for emergency?
Yeah, no, that's what I said, I, I was looking for that right away to make sure, you know, after knowing about what happened.
Sure.
Looking for all that.
That was my question, I don't see any bathrooms on the plan?
Yeah, there's three bathrooms in the space and, uh, but they're, they're communal, so every, you know, the rest of the building shares them.
So, where, are they on that floor?
They're, they're on that floor, there's one directly across from the main entrance for the reception area. I could show you if you'd like on the map. Yeah, just in the hallway outside the, outside the...
Is there a hallway, so any other occupants, inhabitants?
All right, so then the entrance isn't the back entrance to get in?
No, that's where I was seeing it.
Where is the entrance?
It's, it's on the diagonal on the, on the paper that I gave you. It's at reception.
And this one?
So, the one I have is red.
This is upstairs?
It's upstairs.
Yeah. Is it where the gym used to be?
No, 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 it's here. So, this is the, this is the main entrance where you come into the building. There's a ramp here and then this is the main entrance for our...
This is the front right here.
That's the front of the building, yeah, but that's underground. This is subterranean.
Yeah.
The back is open is where the parking lot is. And then there's another side parking lot just here. So, you, you come into this entrance just here and then our, our business starts here. This is where reception is. This is a bathroom, this is a bathroom and this is a bathroom.
This is the back of the building over here.
The back of the parking lot, yeah.
There's a side parking lot up there?
There's, yes, so it comes up and it's kind of elevated.
Oh, from the back?
From the back.
Okay, yeah.
Can't get it, can't get to it from here.
Okay. All right, I get it now.
I have two quick questions. The, the doors, the electric lock doors, fail safe, goes into open mode, I would...
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be tied into like a central control.
Yeah, and what, uh, what kind of, it says you have specialty equipment to open the doors or locks in emergency. What would that consent of?
Uh, like bolt cutters, maybe a halogen tool, uh, just in case of emergency, it's on the property. Uh, bolt cutters are there anyway for most of these because people mess with the locks and they get broken, stuff like that, so...
May I say something? I just wanted to make a note that David has been in touch with the building inspector multiple times, I think, and, um, they've been working together as this project moves forward, along with the fire inspector, to make sure that everything is safe. It's a new thing in town, it's a new thing for them and, um, the applicants have been very receptive to, to moving forward and keeping the building inspector on board with everything. I just wanted to make note of that.
I'd, I'd like to have a finalized plan for you, uh, finalized kind of floor plan, but it's, it's just not reasonable where we're currently at. Um, you know, we, we're gonna base that off of whatever, you know, information we get from the professionals. We'll, so we'll, we'll touch base with them probably in the next two weeks and hopefully finalize the floor plan, which we'll then of course submit. But again, that's all interior space. Um, I'd say, I'd say 50% of the space, maybe 60% of the space we're not touching, it's all existing, uh, and it all has fire suppression, emergency strobe lights, smoke detectors, all that. It's just the, the portion that we are touching inside that open space, we want to make sure is, is legal and safe.
Does anybody else have any?
No, I'm good.
Any more questions or discussion? Okay, so, does anybody want to make a motion to close the findings?
We have to close the public hearing first.
I make, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
So, move.
All those in favor closing the public hearing? Okay, now, does somebody like to make a motion on the findings? Or...
Um, I'm, I'm okay with that, Dee. I, I only think since we don't have a real final, finalized interior plan, but, uh, I don't see a problem where, 'cause since we're questioning the use of it, that there would be a problem to make a motion. Would you agree?
I would agree.
Okay. Uh, knowing that, I'll make a motion to find that the proposal by the proponent, uh, Mr. David Jackett.
Jake what?
I'm not gonna get that right. Okay, um, you see, Dan Matty's in my head for some reason or other. For property located at 179 Main Street LLC, Sturbridge, Mass, um, for the purpose of operating an Escape the Pike, uh, room, in parentheses, escape game and a mu, uh, a change in use to a, a recreational use and amusement and retail game, okay? Uh, from a commercial to a retail use consisting of 2,767 square feet will not be substantially more detrimental to the existing in accordance with section 24.09, subsection A through E and section 20.05 of the Stur- Sturbridge zoning bylaws. That's to find.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, now, we need another motion to grant or deny the request.
I'll make a motion to grant the special permit requested as outlined in the act, in the application and documentation provided, uh, shown on plan titled, where's the plan titled? It, it just says 179 Main Street LLC. That's what I had, yeah, located at 179, local, to, uh, prepared by Burton, yeah, it's listed as 179. Yeah. Uh, prepared by Burton Engineering, 39 Elm Street, Southbridge, Mass, dated March 2nd, 2012, project number 16-627, revision number five, dated 1 January 3rd, 2019. Uh, the can, I, I would, uh, add the following conditions. Yeah, this, well, just one minute. The risk assessment, yeah, well, let's, yeah, I have that here, you know, I have it here too. All right, number one, approval is granted subject to the condition that all other necessary state, I did have that here, yeah, and local approvals, um, be obtained prior to beginning any work on the project. And the risk assessment and physical security plan shall be drafted, provided to the public safety department prior to opening. Confirmation that this has been done shall be provided to the planning department. And I would like to also add that at no time shall any game activities be permitted in the outdoors area. If approved, all, like I said, all necessary state and local approvals shall be obtained and filed prior to any construction. And be aware, there's a 20-day appeal period from the date of the filing by the town clerk of our decision.
Okay, do we have a sec, a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Diane seconded it.
Any discussion?
Uh, quickly, I'm looking at Gene's memo. Um, make sure that we've covered such uses not chapter 11 to the vermin uses, uh, will not be hesitant or create danger to public safety, uh, consistent and surprise practical with comprehensive plan for future development of the area, which is, uh, provision for roads and parking should be laid out, yes, it does, and location, nature, height of building and so forth, um, do not affect, adversely affect the character alone. I think we've covered it all, so...
Yeah, well, that's under 2409.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did that in the finding. That's basically what everybody reads over before, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Well, you better weigh easy.
No, this is a big thing for us because we've never approved anything that people could enjoy in Sturbridge.
Oh, that's baloney.
We'll try our best.
Do you like Teddy G's and all of that? And all those other things that are in there?
Why you have the dog hotel?
Exactly. Take care.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
We're not finished. Wasn't that bad, right?
So we could have our March meeting.
Thank you. Okay. We got a few more things to take care of.
Oh, yeah, we have more things.
Did you guys do the minutes?
Uh, no, we have the letter from Mr. Earhart.
I just lost it.
Oh, we should discuss that.
Okay, hold on one second.
Isn't that postponed? The letter from, we have one more thing, but it's, it's put up to the next meeting.
We do, right, yeah.
We have to.
Yeah, we do, that's what I'm saying, the notice said for the continuance.
So we were supposed to have a public hearing at, uh, seven twenty-five? Administrative appeal from Robert Kasim. However, the attorney requested an extension. I'm gonna find it. Look at that, magic. So apparently the legal notice did not go into the paper, so we will not be able to hold this public hearing. It will be rescheduled for February twentieth. Mr. Earhart sent over a request for extension of time to hold the public hearing until March first. Since we are holding the hearing within sixty-five days of the filing, February fifteenth. So the hearing will be the twentieth.
Continuation request is for the first.
So the hearing will be February twentieth at six-thirty-five, as long as they get the legal notice in the paper. And the extension till the first gives us a little leeway in case there's a snow day or something.
So we have to vote on that.
Yeah.
What was the second date?
March first.
March first. We need to have the meeting by March first.
So after the hearing, there's so many days?
Sixty-five. So we have sixty-five to make a decision, but he's asking for a continuance, so we're okay, right?
Right.
As long as we get a, a request for continuance by the person, the proponent requesting it.
Because the sixty-five days is from when you get the application.
Application, right, so you have to act on it. Yeah, from the time you get the application.
And now, time to hold the public hearing until March first.
That would have been, um, February, I think fifteenth?
Yeah, just in case of bad weather. See, he asked for a continuation.
So we, but we're not opening it because it wasn't in the paper, so.
No, we're not opening, we're just forwarding for the continuance.
We're just, um, rescheduling it.
We're granting the request for continuation.
Well, really.
It's not continuing.
We're not continuing it as a public hearing because, you know.
So we're, we're rescheduling the public hearing for February twentieth.
Right.
So all those in favor of rescheduling the public hearing to February twentieth?
At, at February twentieth.
At six-thirty-five.
Are we doing it at six-thirty-five or, okay, six-thirty-five, okay.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous.
So Rebecca, did they get a new public hearing with a new time to put in the paper?
Yes, yeah, as soon as we learn that.
Make sure we get the certified, but his cards back.
Yes.
Right, that is my question.
Yeah, that's what I mean, that we have them for the hearing at least to a before.
So I don't seem to have a copy of that either.
What?
That.
No, I don't, I don't need it, so.
Oh, the email?
No, I didn't get a copy of that.
No.
Yeah, I downloaded this.
Oh, so here, I just want, James, I'm not going to the paper. This is for the February twentieth. But he's, well, this, he wants to request for extension of time to hold the public hearing until March first?
No.
What, I don't underst-
In case of inclement weather.
When an application comes in, we stamp it and from that time.
Right, you have sixty-five days.
Sixty-five days.
Correct.
So the sixty-five days is over like February?
I think it's the fifteenth or, yeah, it's right there.
And we're meeting the twentieth, so he's asking for an extension of that date and then he put March so that he can, in case of like bad weather or something that happens.
Then if that happens before.
We didn't make a motion that included March first. Does that matter?
No, I think we just need it in writing, really.
I think we just have to read that into the public record.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure we needed to vote on it, but it's nice.
We voted to schedule.
Yeah, we already voted, so we're all set.
Yeah, it was read into, it was already read, so it's in public records and it'll be in the minutes, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, so that would go six-thirty-five intentively until February twentieth.
Alright, so the next thing, so you guys did not do the minutes, is that what you're saying?
No, did not. No, we deferred them because we only had one minute and, and some people didn't get the, uh, second amended copy, the draft copy.
So which one of these is, they both have the same date?
One is twenty-fourth and one is November fourteenth.
Observant March. See, it's too late now for me. Um, okay, so we'll look at October twenty-four minutes.
And these are revised draft minutes.
Yes.
Cause they're not the ones you had in your first packet.
Does anybody have any corrections, additions on these? No, do we have a motion to accept the revised draft minutes of Wednesday, October twenty-fourth?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor? And Diane was absent, so she abstained, so.
We have one abstention.
And then we have the November fourth.
Fourteenth.
Draft minutes.
November fourteenth.
November fourteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Actually, I wasn't here, but I noticed something on that which, um, will be updated. The vote says six to, or we have six people.
We have two people. Actually, we had three.
I'll change that to five.
Two.
So as amended?
I make a motion that we accept the, um, corrected, um, draft minutes of November fourteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Second, anybody second?
I'll second it.
Tom? All those in favor? Except Michael, you were not here.
That's right, I was not here.
Please try.
I wasn't there. Well, my heart was in the right place.
Right, that's right.
Alright.
So that's five.
And, I just want to do the reorganization of the board.
I'll make a motion to nominate Liz Banks as chair.
Okay, so, someone has to take over, admit to that, right?
We need a second.
Rebecca can take, take it over. We usually defer it to them, to the administrative assistant.
So we have a nomination for Liz Banks for the position of chair. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Who seconded it?
But Dallas spoke a little sooner.
No, it was Mike.
It was Mike.
Oh, okay.
And, uh.
You willing to accept?
Oh, are you willing to?
That's the question.
Yes, I'll accept.
Okay.
Alright, and we?
And, um, do we have a vote? Any discussion?
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations for chair? Okay, we'll defer to a vote for Liz Banks for chair of ZBA. Okay.
I'll, I abstain, so.
Did you vote for Dallas?
No, you vote for yourself.
I know, but.
No, that's what you should do. Alright, you accepted, you said you accepted, so.
So.
Alright.
Do we have nominations for the clerk, chi, clerk, uh, is it assistant, vice chair?
Vice chair and clerk, same thing.
I nominate Mr. Young.
Mr. Young?
I'll accept the nomination.
Alright, do we have a second?
Oh, yeah, I second it.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, all those in favor?
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations first?
I give everybody a chance.
All those in favor? Okay, great.
Okay.
Oh, new business?
Any old business?
No, um.
Go ahead, Marge.
Am I up in April?
I'd have to look at the website.
I think I am.
I did. I have updated all our department boards with that information online.
Yeah, cause it was June, but then because of the forty B, they wanted me to get on in April, so.
I, I think you're twenty-nineteen, yes.
Yeah.
And you're appointed.
I'm appointed. I ran for election before, no, thank you.
Uh, I don't know if anyone else has.
Fiddles and I are both up.
Up for reelection?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I think the clerk might have nomination papers or is putting them in order, just for your reference.
Yes, usually to, uh.
Now, I think she sends out an email. I don't think she has yet.
The signatures you need for, you know, to get, is that based, wasn't that based on population or voters?
It is.
It is, that's what I thought.
I don't know, I don't recall the numbers off the top of my head, but I have had that discussion with.
I think it's based on pop, on, uh, the devoted, uh, the population.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so somebody said they need thirty now on a petition, is that?
That's been about around thirty, thirty-six, thirty, something like that.
It was forty-five or something.
Yeah, you did it most recently, so I feel like forty-eight comes to mind.
Alright, cause I, I know the population has, since I moved here, the population has doubled.
Yeah, well.
In forty years.
Oh.
Hey, come on, the biggest population growth in the last few years.
Most recently, I, I think it's thirty, thirty signatures, something like that.
It's not much.
Huh?
Took ten minutes ago.
I'll give you my papers next time.
You'll take your ten minutes?
No, that's illegal, I'm not supporting that.
The best place to go is down to the recycling center. That's the best place and stand with somebody that's popular in town, right?
And before you, before you all leave, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna give you your conflict of interest paperwork to have you sign it before you leave.
I signed mine already.
You did. Marge is off the hook, Diane is off the hook, so it's just the five.
Conflict of interest, I sent my.
Any more, any more older, new business?
I sent my.
Yes, I just need this one, which you have to sign every year. And then you guys are all set, you're pretty good this year. Good job. And one of the easier boards.
Okay, so a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
New business?
I already asked that. And you have any new business, Marge? I don't wanna cut you off from anything. Have any?
I'm trying to think. I don't think so.
All set?
Yeah.
Seconds, you gonna second that, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Time noted, eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.